I want to thank all of our visitors for coming, our citizens for being here, everyone that's watching via our social media accounts. We'll open up with prayer followed by our pledge and Mr. Woods if you would lead us in prayer and we'll follow with the pledge.
Father, God, again, thank you now for just being so good to us, thank you for just being so kind. And most of all, thank you for being God and God all by yourself. Again, tonight, we pray that you give us wisdom, that you give us knowledge to master how to continue leading your people. We pray to Master for our mayor, for our council, for everyone apartment heads. God, we just thank you now for being so good and so kind, in Jesus' name.
Place the flag, move it.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
If you will call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Laow.
Here.
Mr. McKinnney.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
All right, well, I want to let you guys know, I did talk to Mr. Councilman Brown today, he's doing better, recovering well. He said continue to keep him in your prayers and hopefully he'll be back next month. So, but I did speak to him and then I got a chance to see him early this month also, so. But he said thank everyone for the prayers and calls and text messages and all that. Also, I want to add to the, not necessarily to this agenda, but we failed to put it in our council package that we have a slum here meeting immediately after this meeting, so Mr. McKinnney, Ms. Ray and Mr. Williams, don't y'all take off too fast, okay? All right, um, or don't start talking later. All right, so next, uh, got the approval of our minutes from our regular scheduled council meeting on the June tenth and our special call council meeting on the twenty-fourth, sorry, I'll start with our minutes from June tenth. Is there any changes or corrections or deletions to those minutes from June tenth? If not, is there a motion that we approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Laow, second by Mr. McKinnney, if you will cast your votes. All right. Motion care Suzanne Jordan go through, was that a yes?
He must have gave me Carolines.
Mark Suzanne as a yes. Under my report, I want to thank all the employees and all, every, the staff and everyone that came out to our Fourth of July celebration. Thank the community, we had a great time, good turnout, lots of good fun and thank you again for coming out. Also, we got shirts, so if any of the council members were not able, I spoke to a lot of y'all, y'all were out of town and weren't able to come. We, I don't care about having your shirt, so if you want to get with her to get your shirt, she got them. Don't you? I think so, yeah. All right, so next on my report, we have a public meeting on the fifteenth at six regarding our city elections. And then we also, at our last meeting, Councilman McKinnney requested that we added a crime discussion to that meeting also. So that will be next Monday at six o'clock. And then, I want to let y'all know that next week we'll be hosting our annual camp baller. So if any of y'all want to come and hang out and chaperone and meet, I think we got ten kids, I guess, right now signed up, so. We have a whole week, any, anytime you want to show up, come on, we'll have some fun for you. So, starting two, next Tuesday, be our camp baller, from Tuesday till Friday, so we're excited about that. That's a lot of fun. All right, that's all have under my report, public comments, anybody? I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, let's go back. I'm sorry, on the twenty-fourth, special call minutes, is there any changes or corrections to those? Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Ms. Ray, is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods, if you will cast your votes. Motion care, I, um, let me y'all take mine then, here, get the bear out of there. Y'all don't never let me vote. Public comments, we got anybody on the public comments? Or? Yes, I did, I was in a jail in La Bonner, let me make, I try to clear that up, everybody looking. The bail, uh, jail bail, I forgot what they call it, fundraiser for La Bonner at Walmart. I had to be locked up for an hour or more until I came up with two fifty and I think it took me about thirty minutes and I, I raised it. Not the time Woods helped me much, he did a couple dollars, so. Walmart always do a good job with supporting La Bonner and that fundraiser, so. Yeah, next time I get locked up, I'm gonna call y'all early, maybe I won't even have to, y'all can write a check for. All right, moving on to standing committee. Reports under electric, the BEA board met on the eighteenth. Uh, action, following action was taken, appointed Blake Stain as attorney for BEA fiber numbers, four thousand thirty-eight total, thirty-six ninety-three residential, two forty-one business and a hundred and four waiting for service. Utilities, Mr. Jim Noff.
Good evening, council, mayor. Utility board met July third. We discussed as follows, utility department, we sold, finally sold our backhoe, gov deals, our old one that we replaced. We're about eighty percent completing the lines, the extended two-inch gas line installation at New Hope and Smalley Road in Middleton. Received the new zero-turn lawnmower and I met with A two H to review the lagoon and water plant on the ARP fund. And they're working on assessment plan, which is part of the T D A A R P grant that we got in twenty-two. And we also had to install a check valve on well number three over here behind the water plant. And did that in-house, as far as labor, the guys really saved a lot of money on installing it ourselves, a lot. And gas prices are sixty-five cents for July. And that concludes my report. Yes, sir, it's been like that for a while, but it's, it'd probably go up this winter, we said that last winter, but it didn't, but.
I was going to say it didn't go up last one, the one that it did go up the board, ate the cost on, on some of it, I think sixty-seven or seventy.
It's, it's holding in there pretty good.
He ain't selling much gas, but a hundred degrees outside. All right, next fire chief price.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, evening.
My report, fire report, total call, fire call was twenty-nine, we had eighteen in the city, half of them was alarm call and counting call, we had eleven. Training hour, we had two hundred and eleven, training hours, smoke alarm installed was twenty-six, fire code inspection twenty-one. Uh, the F three fifty that we ordered, that we're going to turn to a brush truck is in, we ordered in November, it finally came in last month. Now we just waiting on to put radios and lights and stuff in and then we have it get here, then we take it out and have it strike. That's my report.
Thank you, chief. Next fire, I'm sorry, next police chief John.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My report is as follows, calls of service total was five hundred and seventy, citations a hundred and seventy-four, accidents were sixteen, five injury, eleven property damage, thirty-eight arrests, five of them were juvenile, adult thirty-three. Special events, we did two saturations, block party patrol and of course red, white and blue and we had five hours of training. Close my report.
Chief, because I always like to give credit where credit is due, uh, in regards to the tragedy death that happened over there in Sycamore and Mitchell Street. I wanted to tell the police department, we do appreciate y'all solving that crime that quick, two days, that's pretty quick. And I want to say commend y'all for that, thank you and tell you officer, we do appreciate it. Also, the shooting that happened on Madison Street. I was listening on the city radio and, and the officers was there in the area, responded quick. That's what the citizens is looking for and I, I want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I want to let the officers know, we do appreciate it, I like to give credit where credit is due.
I will pass it on.
Tell them I said thank you and the council, I'm quite sure, also saying it's not just only me, I'm talking, but I'm speaking for the council as well. But thank you though, thank you.
I'll pass it on.
Uh, thank you, chief John, he gonna want some more, uh, sky cops at his buddy's watch. I know, because he did that to me.
Won't let you go, did I speak too quick?
Come on, Mr. Ford. See how much he appreciate it when you ask for that, some more money.
Mayor.
Hi, Mr. Ford.
Parks and Recreation reports on the following, the city swimming pool has held up, it's done well. But we will be shutting it down in about three weeks, I'm looking forward to that.
He said he looking forward.
The adult exercise line dance class continues as well as our pickleball, Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. A disc golf tournament is being planned and obviously out at our disc golf course at Pleasant Run. Looking at the first weekend or so in November, but we'll have more information on that as we put it together. We will begin the registration and sign up period for our volleyball league later next month. Youth summer golf league is going, well, it's closing out, last day will be July thirty-first. And lastly, we'll begin our youth soccer league on July twenty-ninth. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Excuse me, Mr. Ford, does somebody say you'd like to be doing an adult golf league or something, did I hear that?
I've talked to someone who was interested.
I can't remember, but I said something.
It's something weird, entertaining, we can get enough participation, obviously we'll have to reach out to Mr. Dillon Hill in the country club and see what, what's available, but that's something I have talked to some people about.
If I, we start that, I'm probably gonna take the cup when that, just saying.
I'm not gonna start.
Is that a, a training session involved in that? Because I don't know how to golf, so is that a training session?
I don't either, so you riding me? You just gotta know how to use your pencil, that's all.
The mayor, the mayor said he, he's offering training lessons. The mayor's offering training lessons to people, that, that's what I'm hearing. Yes, sir.
All right, uh, next streets of sanitation, Mr. Mayfield.
Mister Mayor, members of council, department heads and public, Jerry Mayfield, uh, Bolliver Street Sanitation. We started our trash pickup around downtown again, that's normal, we're doing a lot of weed eating, we're painting the speed bumps as fast as we can get paint in to get it done. Our landfill report was, residential was a hundred and twenty-five point three eight ton, commercial was two hundred and eighty-three point one eight ton for a total of four hundred and eight point five six tons, all carried in at once. And July is bulky item month, so if you got it, put it out, we'll try to get it as quick as we can.
When do you, do you put it out on that regular day, you put your trash out like that Monday or any day?
Any day, any day, any day this month, yes, and.
Thirty days, any day. I guess thirty days, whatever.
Yes, till the end of July, end of July, we're shutting it down, we may go a couple days over. I'm trying not to, but, you know.
No tires, no demolitions, no freon.
Right.
Stuff like that, but if you, you put in a count scrap metal out there, the scrap metal.
Oh, it'll be gone before we get there. But no deck boards, no fence boards, no doors, wood from inside the house, demolition, we get charged for that when we take it to the landfill. So, and they do look, I mean, trust me, they look.
Yeah, Mr. Mayfield, have you made it over there on the four-way stop yet, clean out that ditch?
Uh, it's been done twice that I know of.
I haven't been over there, so I just asked.
It has been.
Oh, it have been, okay, okay, I haven't, I haven't, okay, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Uh, next library, Ms. Jessica.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, we took in eight thirty-five oh five in revenue for June, we had a total of eighteen programs. Five for sassy seniors, thirty-five summer reading kickoff, twelve for craft time, thirty-four for story time, four for the adult brown bag book club, thirteen for STEM, we had thirty-six for the movie Fridays, eighteen for Lego, six for bingo, uh, which was a total of a hundred and sixty-three for the live programs, we had two twenty-three for our passive programs. Our estimated patronage count for the month was seven forty-five. For our meeting rooms, we booked thirty-eight times with a total of a hundred and thirty-one guests. Our cert report, uh, we have one thousand nine hundred and fifty-one total circulation with three oh five computer users, two thousand eight fifty-nine wifi users, six fifty-four read downloads, sixteen history room visits, five microfilm usage, uh, forty-nine history room materials circulated, twenty-five interlibrary loan borrowed and twelve interlibrary loaned.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Zoning and compliance, Mr. Watt.
You know, y'all talking about that golf, I don't know. You might could teach me something, mayor, I ain't figured out how to swing that bat and hit that little bit of ball yet. It just don't work and you can't eat them eggs, so, you know, just leave it alone.
There's some cute outfits though.
Well, I never like to think, because you watch it on TV and the announcer's talking, we're now at the fifth hole.
Oh, you can't talk, you ain't going.
I ain't going, you're right, you're right, if I can have a good time, I ain't going. Uh, my report, building consultations, five permits written, one building inspections, three plumbing inspections, three mechanical inspections, three. Courtesy notice is issued twenty-five and we got some issues, some situations going on around town, we're trying to work on. I know some of you have probably had some calls about some of the stuff sitting in people's yards and things and we're kind of, we're working on that, trying to get it picked up, get them to pick it up. Bulky item month is a good month, it helps a whole lot, but, uh, some of that stuff just not going to pick up, you know? I saw tires today and, uh, construction debris and all kind of stuff, so we're working on it. All we can do is tell them, if they don't pick it up, we'll get it and charge them for it, so we're working on it though. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Watt, I'll let y'all know, we did have, I guess I should have mentioned on the Jerry report, you can come on Dillon. We did cut, uh, the grass on Jones and Fisher, um, and then we did, uh, A T, AT and T over off of Lafayette, um, a couple more we got and we'll send them, one on Oak Cove and then we'll send them bills, but.
You did, you did get the AT and T bill?
Not the whole, we didn't do the whole yard, we did the right of way on the sidewalk, um, so we, some of them, like on the one on Jones and Fisher, we know every year we cut that in, I don't understand, we send the bill, we add the bill to the taxes and they pay it every year. Um, it's a lot cheaper to get a landscaping person than to send Jerry team out there, but, um, we got it, so it was a couple more that we working for. To do, I just want, I know a couple y'all ain't commented about those, so we got them.
What about the lot out there on Eighteen and West End, right there across from Johnny Johnson, old Johnny Johnson?
Uh, well, that's, that's just an empty lot, that's really not, um, we cut the, they cut the right of ways before was that lot. That's not really in violation of the, they usually keep that cut, but I don't know. Yeah, maybe they growing hay on it now, so. Yeah, I was going to say, they might have started cutting it for hay, but.
No, it's got, it's got sap.
Oh, I don't know, I'll check and see.
Because I've had several calls on that too.
But I, I'll, we'll check on this thing. All right, Mr. Hill, sources on the community development.
Council, um, my report is, I completed the workforce development training through Tennessee E C D. Uh, that will complete all of the required courses for my certified economic developer license. Um, and graduation should be in October, so, um, that is a check that I can move forward from. Uh, I met with Jeremy Burnett, who is the director at Lone Oaks Farm, about ways that we can team up, uh, as city and, uh, that entity with the University of Tennessee to use their lodging. Um, we're looking at doing so, some, uh, stay in play type deals, uh, especially around, um, the fall and specifically the weekend of the barbecue festival, we're going to try to put out some deals where people can stay in the cabins there for a cheaper rate if they come and, uh, eat in our restaurants and stuff like that and participate in our festival. So, it, we, I think it's going to work out well for both of us and then of course assisted with red, white and bolliver. Um, the next show at Louise is August the fifteenth, so we took a little break for summer, um, because we know people are going, doing a lot of things. But August fifteenth is Party Planet and it is a decade show, they play music from everywhere, from the sixties and seventies to today. So, we're going to have a, um, decade themed tonight and ask that all the people that come dress in their favorite decades. So, you guys will be invited, uh, to sit upstairs in the loft with the mayor and we invite you to put on your best decade attire. Thank you.
What time would that be?
It'll be seven.
Might put a little competition on, see which one of y'all can wear the best fro or the mohawk or something. All right, um, moving on to old business, got discussion of library agreement, uh, what this is, I wanted to bring this up and just literally have a discussion. We got, this has been an issue for a while and, and we had, we've never done anything about it and we in the county, uh, Mayor, Mayor, Pope, Mayor, Mayor Pulse talked about it. Um, and I spoke to the Commissioner Williams and I spoke to, uh, Councilman Williams also, sort of explain to you. So, one of them issues that is not an issue until it is, the library is split fifty-two forty-eight, the county owns majority of it and the, uh, the fifty-two percent and the county, uh, the city owns forty-eight percent. And what happens over time, uh, I, I don't know why, how it was created or why it was created like this. I do know that it changed under, uh, when Jim Lee and the night at some point in time, they used to all be county employees and at some point they went to being city employees and that's how they are now. Um, why I'm bringing it to y'all tonight is, they have, the library employees have been left out a lot as employees, they sort of fall between the cracks. Uh, I, I prefer to say that we support the library and I'm not trying to cut them out of anything like that, that's not the issue. But like, what we have here, and this is not the first time it happens, we usually just, we don't bring it up or hope that somebody fixes it, but hopefully we can get some type, type of fix. This year, we gave all our city employees a five percent cost of living increase. That passed our budget, that went, uh, but the county did not do a cost of living increase. And the library is one of those entities that's on their maintenance of effort, so we have to fund them at the same level of funding every year. We can't lower their funding, so if we give them a hundred thousand this year, we have to give them that same amount. Plus, if we want to give them more, we can give them more, but we can't go below it. Um, so what happens is, we did five percent cost of living, the county didn't do any cost of living increases. So, the county is not raising their portion that they're, unless something changes, right now, they have no intent to give any other employees raises. So, which means those library employees won't get a raise. This is not the first time this happened, I know since I've been mayor, this is probably the, what, the third time maybe? Uh, I know this happened back and forth when Mayor Stain was here, um, and every time the city gives cost of living increases, the library never gets them, because the county never gets a cost of living increase and when they do, it's not on the same level of the city. One year, I think we gave five percent cost of living increases and the county did two percent, is that right? I think they did two percent, so the employees from the library got a two percent cost of living increase, not the five percent. Um, and some of y'all may have been on council, y'all remember when we did, when we changed, I asked you guys to support changing the minimum wage for all the city employees to be a living wage of fifteen dollars an hour? Well, the library didn't do that because the county didn't increase their portion. Um, and this happens a lot, um, say happens a lot, that, on that end it happens and then also on issues when it comes to maintenance and they sort of just, I said the redhead the stepchild in the meeting this morning, not, we don't support them, but they just get caught between the two bodies all the time. The city, for whatever reason, we, uh, we, I'm not going to say we do majority of the work, but the day-to-day stuff, they answer to the city, even though the county owns more of them. So, like Jessica's the director now, she has a question about something, she comes to me and we decide yes or no on what we're going to do. Um, and it's fine, I have no, I work great, Jessica, Becky, we've all worked good together, hadn't been an issue, but we got to figure out something that they, one, can't keep getting lost between the cracks like that. And then also, it's not really fair to the city that we don't own majority of it, but we get caught with majority. I hate sitting in front of them and when we have a city employee meeting, telling them, you know, hey, everybody's, we finna get a cost of living increase, we're going to get longevity, we list these benefits that we're going to give them and they don't get it. And, um, I, I mean, I don't like doing that. Um, another issue, it wasn't a problem, because when the library board agreed to hire, make, um, Jessica the, the director, I was fine with that. Well, she was going to be my pick too, but the board, by this bylaws here, uh, the board determines the director. Well, if for whatever reason, this hadn't happened, but it potentially could, if the board decided to hire candidate A, if the mayor, whoever the mayor is, don't want to hire candidate A, then what happens? Uh, the board sets the salary, it's sort of hard, it's not fair to, and like I said, let me say, we, I have no, and they'll tell you, I don't have any issues with Justin nor Becky. They are not the issue, it's just disagreement, it, it doesn't, it's working because we're working it, but it's, we really need to look at how we want to handle this, because in the event, for whatever reason, we want to raise their pay or we don't want to hire, fire, do whatever, this group based off of this doesn't have that control. Um, and the county, like I said, I talked to Mayor, uh, Pulse about it, he, he agrees with me that we need to, you know, look at what we can do. We've talked about maybe making them county employees like they used to be in disagreement, go back to how it was where they'll be county employees, get county benefits, county pay and all of that. Uh, that would probably fix one of the issues this, this year, because one of the issues we got now is there, you remember we, our budget committed, we changed the benefits on health insurance, where the employee used to, the city, we used to pay a hundred percent of the employees insurance, now we're only paying seventy-five percent. Well, there, the library, um, they're going to have some of those employees that are on our city insurance, they're going to have a cut in their pay and that's not fair to them. Um, a fix this year, like I said, if we take them and put them and put, if they, for whatever reason, we put them on the county insurance, it fixes that this year, where they don't have to pay, the county will pay a hundred percent of their benefits, but if y'all can see, we just got a lot of little issues here that we have had, that we, I've really had just brought to this board, because it had, we hadn't had any falling outs at the library, anything like that, but we need to figure out something, I don't want to keep having these employees getting lost between city, county and vice versa. So, I wanted to let y'all know what was going on, I don't have any, I'm not necessarily asking for a action to be made tonight. I wanted to bring it to y'all, let y'all know, discuss it. I mean, I, I talked to Mayor Pulse and I talked to Commissioner Williams and they're going to discuss it on the county level also. So, I'll probably go to their budget meeting or their commission meeting to speak on the city's behalf, but like I said, I'm not here to throw away the library. I want us to compete, continue to fund it like we're completely doing, but at the same time, these are just little issues and, you know, I talked to, uh, talked to Chris about it as well and I think just a little bit of time that he's been on there, he's seen it too. Grateful we've had good employees and we've had good relationships, that it hadn't happened, but, you know, it potentially, it potentially could happen. If the board has the power, you know, I forget what section, section four, the board has the power to direct the affairs of the library, including the appointment of the librarian who shall direct the internal affairs of the library. Well, that's all fine and good when the board and the mayor agrees, same way with the county mayor, but if the county mayor or the city mayor don't agree with the director, then what, you know, um, but these, this, like I said, that's nothing, I, I'm good with Becky, good with just all the employees, they do great, but we just can't let them keep going in the middle of this and it's not fair to them, so, um, you know. But I, I'm here to, I'll open the floor if I've got any questions or, you know. Go ahead, Ms. Clerk.
I, I have a question. Would it be just as easy to bring them on as city employees as it was to put them over there considering, I feel like they would get better taken care of over here?
They are city employees.
But I'm saying, so what is, so why are we, why do we, why can't, I'm just saying, can't we do something so that they are full city employees? So that when we do get raises and all that, that's the part I'm trying to, how do we fix that?
The money issue, we, the percentage is broken.
The money issue, we, the percentage is broken down by fifty-two forty-eight, so whatever our forty-eight percent is, the county has to pay fifty-two percent. And because of maintenance of effort, if the county doesn't pay more, we don't pay more, so, cause our money changes, like what we did one year for, was it the history room? The, what was that we bought for you, I can't remember. There was something we bought, though. The reader thing, um, that ain't what it's called, but I don't remember what it's called, but we, we bought that and just made a donation, that's like buying items and stuff like that, that's not an issue as much as it is the personnel part of it. The county's percentage is based on, I, our percentages are based on that bottom line, so if we increase our pay, if we increase their salary line, that increases what the county has to pay, and vice versa. This had, it hadn't happened like this since I've been here, it's never been a situation where the county has wanted to pay, and the city said no. Um, that's, I don't know if that's happened in the past, but I know since I've been here, there's never been a time where the county gave out raises, and the city didn't pay the difference, but usually it's just been the other way around, so to answer your question. If that's, that bottom line raises, the county portion's right, county portion is all of that.
Maybe we can give it to them in a bonus at the end of the year, this is the money that we wanna show y'all, we wanna give y'all this raise, we can't give it to you on your salary, we're gonna give it to you like this. I mean, it's always a way to give somebody some money.
Yeah, we wanna be legal about it, that's a. Yeah, we can always give our money.
That's why you're here. The county ain't got no money, why do we keep talking about, the county, give somebody some money, they won't, they could be taken home by the state.
We can just, uh, maybe, maybe move the county from it where it only become the city?
Uh, yeah, you got to come up with, how much is their budget, you got to come up with, uh, quite a bit of money, yeah, you got to make up that difference, uh, and we, I don't know that we can pay.
Plus, they're responsible for the building itself and the maintenance on the building, then that.
Yeah, the county owns the building.
Yeah.
So like now. So like, right now, if the county, um, I think it's three hundred dollars, ain't that right? Anything over three hundred dollars, we split, split, but anything below that, and what happens is, you know, the bills get, they send all the bills over here to us, and then we pay them and split them up and separate them out and send them back out. And it's, it's a nightmare, um, they, we make, we make it work, but like, we never know, and the employees, they, and they can tell you more than I can, they never know who's responsible for what. And it's just real vague, like one year, the city did the paving at the parking lot, and I think the county put the roof on or something. But then when the leak happened, and when the, they got an insurance payment, we didn't get a portion of it, we didn't get reimbursed for it, the county got the whole payment.
Can y'all come together on something and bring it back to us, and then we vote on something positive, you know, for that, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of, if y'all come up with something, you know?
Um, yeah, and I'd less, like I said, I wanted y'all to know what was.
Yeah.
And it's been, this been like this for a while, and we have been, they had made a big spiel about it all, but my biggest issue this year was when we changed the insurance. In the past, their payment, their check hadn't been cut, it had been increased, but this year, they're gonna, they're, and I mean, you're not talking about a lot of money, but like, it's money is money, and I don't want to, you know, they gonna go from make, they'll be seventy-five. I think it's about seventy-some dollars every two weeks, that they'll be short, uh, not all of them, just depending on type of insurance they own, and I just don't wanna, I don't like that, you know, and I don't, I just wanted to let y'all know what was, you know.
I have one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you said if the, like Mr. Wood suggested, that if the Bolivar becomes just the Bolivar City Library, then we would have to take on the county cost. Well, if we pull out, they gotta take care, they gotta cover our costs, and they ain't even really pulling their load, so I think that is definitely, that's definitely not an option.
No, right.
What's pulling out is not on the table, right?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I'll say again, I'm, I don't, I have zero intent whatsoever to cut anything, um, I'm really like, wanna increase it, like we did the, there, when we increased all the other employees' pay. But we can't increase it because of the agreement, they're, they, the bottom line is split fifty-two forty-eight, so whatever we raise up, the county has to raise up. So, that's the issue, so.
Any way that you and the county can get together and talk about it?
With the lawyer?
Come up and talk down the solution, uh, that they won't, that salary won't be cut.
Right.
Cause it's, you're right, it's, it's unfair to them, you know, others getting five percent, and they're doing the same job, but then when they look at their check, they get faddened like everybody is, their check is decreasing, and I think it's, it's so unfair to them.
Right, I, I agree, that's what I, still wanted to bring it to y'all.
Yeah.
Um, what I, of the commission meets, I think next week, maybe, I think so, uh, but I talk, uh, what I probably do is, I'll get with Mayor Pulse, and I'll, uh, get with, call, I'll have Chris and, uh, Commissioner Williams together. They are the, they're on the board from the city and the county, just sort of talk through it, I just wanted y'all to hear it from me and know what was going on.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't, none of the, none of the library employees that came and complained a single time through all of this, and this didn't just start yesterday, you know, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, uh, Chris.
So, if we want to look into the MOU, how would we do that? Because it sounds like it needs to be updated, it's very, very outdated, I read it, Julie, or the mayor called me last week, whenever I started to move, get through some of it, uh, it's very dated. How would we go into re-arriving to the MOU?
That's what we, we get that guy right there.
All you have to do is figure out what the agreement is, and we can put all the legal stuff together.
Yeah, um, and, I don't think we ever signed this agreement, yeah, me, nor me, nor Todd did, so, yeah, uh, cause we talked about it last year, right now, this is the agreement we operating on is the one they've had since the nineties, I guess. And once we went and Jessica and them, they, Becky, all of them harassed me and Todd to sign it, um, and it's not that we didn't wanna sign it, but me and Todd, when I was like, look, let's talk about this then, he was like, you know what, these are some valid points. But, you know, we never really came up.
Did we have it very much elbow room in our budget, you know, did we kind of set that up a little bit, where we have a little room to move around in?
Um, not, well, we.
Twenty thousand.
Not, not much. Yeah, uh, but this, like, I hate it, but this won't cost us, uh, it won't cost much to give them the five percent, I, that's not an issue, like, the issue is the legal aspect of that bottom line being split fifty-two.
That's what we got boss man at, he'll figure that out for us.
So, uh, um, if the county don't, and this is not the first, every year, every time we have something, like, that's why we bought that, it was, it's easier buying tangible stuff, cause we can buy something and say, here, we gonna buy it, whether the county wanna split it with us or not, and just give it to them. Um, and I think, I wanna say the county and Devco, I think end up dead supporting that, but when it comes to the operating expense of it, that fifty-two forty-eight is the agreement, and we have to stick to that.
Seems like Devco, considering it is downtown, um, they could, I don't know, fix it up, and or do take care of maybe some part of the maintenance, or, I don't know.
Yeah, um, and we.
It should be looking as good as Silmons in that whole area, I mean, it's literally right there.
Yeah, well, we do landscaping and, um, but I, I mean, we can add that to it, but that ain't gonna fix the salary problem, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, if that is something that is taken, that is taken off of somebody else's, uh, list to pay for, then then maybe they can put that money towards.
Uh, to, yeah.
Salary, I'm just saying, you know, when you run a household, any kind of budget, you gotta move things around sometimes, rob Peter to pay Paul, or whatever.
I think.
Pay these girl.
I think the, 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 uh, sections definitely need to be, um, like the board, like you said, the power to appoint salaries and the director, I think that should definitely fall back on either this board or the county commission, uh. I mean, we all get along brave, you know, and it's a great relationship, but it may not always be like that.
Right.
You sort of appoint salaries and different stuff, I don't know, I just, I feel better if it was either under this, uh, this board or the county commission.
Also, when you get into those discussions, I'd like for there to be some clarification on the maintenance of the building, because I know that that has been an issue in the past. When I was, um, chairman of the library board years ago, you know, there were days that the air conditioning or the heat was out, that I would literally just send them home, because I wouldn't work in those conditions. You know, I wouldn't work when it was hot in a building, I mean, we don't do that at school or anything like that, so, you know, something to be done in a timely manner to, to, for business to continue to operate. Cause they shouldn't be made work in those conditions, you know.
And that's, that's, that, we, like, right now, I think they got a unit out now, and like the way it's set up in the agreement, it's the city and county shall share responsibility for all major repairs, but not limited to roof, air conditioning, parking lot, termite damage. All minor repairs, less than three hundred dollars inside the building, responsibility of the county and maintenance manager. Well, like, right now, they have that unit that's went out, and they're working on it, um, and he's working on putting it together, but right now, it's not under three hundred, I mean, it's not, yeah, it started off under three hundred, but then it went over three hundred, so. Do we split that?
Are those air conditioners that old, I mean, didn't we have to?
Yeah, they, that's the one that they not, yeah, the one that's out now is the old one, it's not the new one, yeah, um, and then like, they had like, one year, the boiler, roller went out or whatever, and that was a nightmare. Uh, because the county thought they could get it fixed, you know, but I, the city, we, I don't have the authority to go and, I, go and put a new unit and come to y'all and say, hey, we gonna buy a new unit, cause when we buy this new unit, the county by law, and by this agreement, has to pay, split it, you know, so. You know, um, but I, I like, I just wanted to start that discussion, let y'all know what was going on, it hadn't, it didn't start yesterday, so, uh.
Bring it up, and also, like what Caroline said, if, uh, Devco wanna pitch in on it, just invite them, you know, they don't have to, you know, but if they want to, we like, we like to get them up equal to the rest of them on the city. You know, I think we will all be majority toward that, you know?
Well, what I'll do, uh.
Y'all come up with.
I'll get with, uh, Mayor Pulse, Commissioner Williams, uh, Councilman Williams, and we'll put together a meeting, and I'll get, I, uh, turn in, city, a county, I don't know who county attorney is, uh, whoever they bring, um. Oh, yeah, I can't remember this, yeah, uh, okay, well, I'll, I'll work on, uh, putting that together, and we'll give y'all some, I'll try to get some next month that we can present to y'all, that y'all can, whether we vote on it or start the discussion.
Sound good.
Just wanna echo what Mayor said, I got five phone calls between time I got off work and this, I guess, work's for the library, um, no one's called me wanting to take money away from them. And the mayor called me, he didn't wanna take money away, we're just trying to streamline the process, uh, you know, where it's easy, you don't wanna go back calling, you know, into the cracks, so, you know, losing money and stuff, so just wanna echo, we're not trying to take money away, we're just trying to streamline the process. And really update the MOU, very outdated, if you read it, you'll immediately tell, this is very, very dated, so, just for another watching a home, we're not taking money away, we're just trying to streamline.
Well, thank you, thank you for that, um, and thank you, Becky and Jessica, y'all do great, and I think y'all know that I, that's not the, not the, trust me, if you go ask them, they'll tell y'all, it's a nightmare, like, trying to, and they work through it more than I have to. But it's a nightmare trying to figure out how to handle all of it. Yeah, all right, um, that's. Oh, yes, ma'am, thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
Did y'all want any, and did y'all wanna say that, okay, yeah, did you? Okay, so thank y'all, and Ms. Davis back there, friends of the library, thank you so much, that's a fundraising, something right there too, she, uh, so, she ain't up here asking us for money, so we gonna move on before she get any ideas. All right, uh, that's all on that, and then, on the new business, uh, resolution twenty, twenty-four zero zero seven, authorize participation in the P P safety partners grant. This is a grant that we get from our, uh, insurance every year, five departments applying for, uh, new turnout here, is what this for, how much is this grant, what, how much we applying for?
I think five thousand.
Five thousand, okay, all right, uh, is there questions on that? And not is there a resolution to, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-four zero zero seven? Motion by Mr. Mc, uh, Golden, and second by Mr. McKenna, if you will, catch your votes, uh, well, you can have.
All right, I vote his.
All right, motion Karen and Suzanne said, put it down, it's just two things, uh, got, make sure, one, if you're going, I think T M L has booked, uh, Mr. Williams, Ms. Miller and Mr. Golden, that if you are going to governor's conference tonight, last call, cause she need to get them rooms, um, situated on the governor's conference, okay? And, uh, stay here, slum here, I mean, Mr. McKenna, Ms. Ray, Mr. Win, that's it, all right, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion of Mr. Kennedy, second, or Mr. Win, all in favor, say aye.
All right.